Board of Commissioners and with me tonight is Commissioner Maureen Boyle and Commissioner Roger Garcia. We're very thankful for you to be here to, one, learn about the study that we held in regards to looking at the services that we provide at our corrections facility, dealing with mental illness services, and also at our mental health facility, which is embedded within our nursing home over on Forty First and Woolworth. So the first phase of the study, what we did is we had staff sit down with the architect, Mr. Al Paladra, and they actually looked at what is currently being done, and then again, looking at the future of how we could do things better. And so tonight, we're here to educate you on what the study says, and then also, or walk you through what the study says, and then ask for any comments that you may have about the mental health in general, about the study itself. Mental health, as you know, is a huge issue, and it's become a priority of ours. When we sit down and talk about things, there's a lot of areas in which we serve people that affect mental health effects. And so we're very proud that we've made this one of our top priorities to address. And we're addressing those that we currently serve. We know that there's a whole lot of people in a whole big county out there that we can't address everything, but what we can do is look at what we're currently doing, not settle for it, and do better. And that's what we're looking at during this, through this study. So with that, I am here to introduce Al Paladra, who is the architect who worked with our two staff, and he'll introduce those folks as they come up to the podium to talk about their areas. But again, thank you very much for being here tonight and being with us to learn and share your thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner. And again, I would like to repeat what you said. We really appreciate you being here tonight to listen to what we've done and look forward to what we're handling during, over the next several months. So the two facilities that we've analyzed, and county facilities that we analyzed, that handle either mental health patients or mental health inmates, are shown on the title page, which is basically the Community Health Center on Forty Second and Woolworth, and the Department of Corrections Facility on Sixteenth and Lenmore Street, downtown Omaha. So what we're going to talk about tonight is the history of those two facilities. Neither one of them were designed to handle mental health patients or inmates, and that's the crux of the problem that we have. Sherry Driver is the Director of the Community Mental Health, and Mike Myers is the Director of Department of Corrections. And I've worked, our firm has worked closely with those two leaders. They have, they deal with thousands of mental health, either inmates or patients, per year, in facilities that weren't meant to handle. So we started, as Mary Ann mentioned, we started with this study at the beginning of this year, and we spent about four or five months looking at what conditions were present, what kind of spaces there were, and then we sat down and said, if, if we could improve the, your spaces, what would we do? We came up with a space program, and that looked at both corrections and community mental health spaces. And we came up with the idea, as we, as we discussed, we could combine those two facilities into a co-located facility. There's some advantage and disadvantages to that, which the two directors are going to get into a little bit tonight. Or we can go with separate facilities. And there's some cost implications and some other issues that we'll talk about. So really, we, we need to come up with a solution that clarifies exactly what we're doing, how much it costs, what kind of staffing implications there are, et cetera. So the first phase was the one we talked about defining the need. The second phase, which is indicated in, in blue, is where we are today. We do not have conclusions. We're at the beginning of this. This is the second town hall meeting that we had. We're doing four, which will be concluded in approximately the middle of October. And we're trying to get community input to help steer the county commissioners onto what the final solution will be. And with that, I'm going to pull it, Sherry, to take over and talk a bit about her, her role and the facilities that she's in charge of.
Good evening. I am going to try to utilize the mic so I can see the screen, but also be as attentive to you as the audience as possible. So we'll see if this works. All right, can you hear me? Oh, oh, backstop, okay, sorry about that. The Douglas County Community Mental Health Center is currently located within the Douglas County Health Center at Forty First and Woolworth. Now, that facility is designed, right now, to be a long-term care facility and nursing home. And so we are embedded within that facility. Over ninety percent of that facility is home to our aging population within Douglas County. The Community Mental Health Center was established in nineteen seventy with a mental health grant. Some of our first renovations that took place were in nineteen eighty-seven. As you can see right now, our current layout, this first picture here is the main floor entrance into the building. And this is where our outpatient clinic and our day treatment program is on the opposite side of the building. Again, we've been retrofitted into a nursing home. When you go to the fifth floor, that's where our two psychiatric adult units are. On one end of the long hallway is our psychiatric intensive care unit, which is an eight-bed acute care facility. You walk down a very long hallway, it's kind of hard to see, but we'll have some pictures here so you can see that, is our general adult unit, which is also an eight-bed facility. So strategically, there's some, there's some difficulties with that. There's a very long hallway separating the two units, and it creates some safety issues, and then also just the ability for staff to be able to work together and, and be more efficient in the care that they're providing to the clients. We also had renovations in two thousand and twenty on our adult units on the fifth floor, and those renovations were to meet CMS guidance. Are you having a hard time hearing me? Yes, absolutely, absolutely, I would definitely do that. So renovations took place in regard to our fifth floor, and those renovations were safety-related, driven by our funding stream. So we had to make sure that there was no ability for any clients on our units to be able to, it's called ligature, but in our terms, be able to hang themselves or hurt themselves, or hurt anybody else. In regard to the services that we provide, we have five different, I'm going to call them departments, and to your point, sir, our outpatient clinic is one of those. That outpatient clinic has medication management, therapy services, individual therapy, and group therapy. So individuals are seen by a psychiatrist or an APRN, assess the need for what type of medications they would need, and then they also have therapy services provided to them if those services would be appropriate for them. We do several different types of therapy for individuals based on their needs. We also do chemical dependency evaluations, and we also have an intensive outpatient program. That program is a combination of group and also individual therapy for individuals who have co-occurring issues. So they have both a mental health and a substance abuse issue. Our day treatment program is a program that operates Monday through Friday, and it runs from nine AM until three o'clock in the afternoon. While individuals are in that program, they're in education group, therapy groups, and they also see a psychiatrist at least once a week, and they also have an individual therapy appointment once a week as well. That program is designed really to help either individuals step down out of an acute psychiatric hospitalization, or to help prevent them from entering into the acute psychiatric hospitalization. I hope that answered your question. Our other programs that we have are our social detox program, and that's located near the Santa Francis House on Nicholas Street, and that's voluntary and involuntary services. And then the final programs that we have are our interface with corrections, and those programs are located in the correctional facility, working with Mike Myers in his room. There we go, okay. So our current location, this gives you some pictures of our current location. The first one here is the travel distance between our two units. Again, pointing out the lack of efficiency in regard to being retrofitted into this building in, I'm going to say, leftover space, basically. Not designed to work with clients who experience mental health and substance abuse issues. This is an example of one of our sleeping rooms, our inpatient hallway, and then this is the common area on our adult general acute unit. Now, there are several challenges that we experience, and in working with Al, we're trying to mitigate those challenges in the design of a new facility, whether that's standalone or co-located and wherever that facility is located. Several issues, acoustics, so if you can imagine, this is a very loud unit, and so when individuals are experiencing a behavioral health crisis, they might be screaming, or their circumstances, it gets very loud for the other clients, and the therapeutic environment then decreases for all of those individuals that are receiving services here. Infection control, with COVID, that is absolutely huge, and we learned a lot. We have, on our intensive care unit, all shared restrooms, all shared showers. There's not a good place for what we call a low exposure room if somebody has COVID, or if we suspect that somebody has COVID. So that was an extreme challenge for us, especially at the onset of COVID when we didn't know a lot about the circumstances we were in. On our other generally unit, we do have one low exposure room that the county renovated, so we do have that if somebody has COVID, or influenza, or anything like that. But again, all of those rooms have shared, they share the bathroom, they share the shower. And again, we have mixed gender units, so there's a challenge there as well. So there's a lot of lack of privacy for the individuals we serve. As you can imagine, the majority of the individuals we serve, mental health, substance use, trauma, homelessness. And so our environment is imperative for those individuals that we're serving, so they have great, a great outcome, and can have really a good ability to engage in the treatment services that we are providing. We are looking at what are the best practices in space. Color is important, acoustics is absolutely imperative for individuals with behavioral health issues, the light that can come in or filter into the building, as you can see, our rooms have very narrow windows. And so we're looking at a design that has much, you know, the evidence-based practice of what other facilities look like. And then finally, again, we're in a building with long-term care services, so we're a hospital within a nursing home. This is new, not new. When we have a national accreditation come through, that's the one thing they always say. This, this doesn't make a lot of sense to us. How is a hospital, all of their support services, under a long-term care facility? Fiscal, dietary, pharmacy? Because our services are very specialized and tailored to behavioral health care, not necessarily, not to long-term care for individuals that are, that are aging. So those are some of the things that we are experiencing within the Community Mental Health Center to date. I'm going to ask Mike to come up and give you a history of this correctional thing.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Myers, I'm the Director of Corrections for Douglas County. And Sherry and I have worked very closely for, I don't know, more than a decade, easily. And we've built a lot of collaborations in ways that we mutually serve clients, the most vulnerable folks in our community oftentimes. And like the Community Mental Health Center, the jail was not designed to be a mental health facility, and yet it is. And we have a very institutional, non-therapeutic setting. It's loud, there's not a lot of color, and it's, the concept of being trauma-informed really wasn't even developed at the time that the most recent addition to that the jail was built, around two thousand and four. So if you look at the, the graphic over there, you'll see there's some colored spaces. So all of those larger spaces, the gray ones, and the blue ones, and the light green ones, those are all the newest addition to the jail that was built in two thousand and four. And the green spaces house female inmates with mental health issues, and the blue housing units are housing male inmates with various degrees of mental health issues. So none of it, zero percent, was designed as a mental health treatment facility, but now half of the footprint of the newest addition of the jail are serving people with various degrees of mental illness. Significant enough that we, each one of these kind of serves as a step-down, and significant enough that they're not stepped down into the other areas of the diagram that are just serving general population, or mentally ill, mentally ill inmates who we've got pretty well-controlled, and they're, seem to be doing okay. There are currently not any private and safe spaces, combining those two characteristics in the jail, for service providers to deliver services. Oftentimes, services are delivered through a doorway, or even through a closed door, through a window, depending upon the risk level, the dangerousness of the, of the situation, and it's, it is far from a therapeutic interaction. So here are some photos. As I said before, this, 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 our facility was not designed to provide mental health care for maximum security individuals. And yet, we do that, and I'll show and tell you some numbers in a little bit. You can see in these photos, the, the first photo on the left is a cell in our infirmary. And it's dark, there's no color. It, in our infirmary, you know, was designed to take care of people who present with medical conditions that don't necessarily rise to the level of having to go out to a hospital, but to put them in another environment, jail might put that person at risk in one way, shape, or form. Our infirmary, instead of serving that function, is probably eighty-five to ninety percent housing individuals who are on suicide watch, or individuals who are detoxing off of opiates or alcohol. And that places a tremendous stress on our staff and on that unit, because it's being used for something that it wasn't designed for. You can see the next photo over in the middle there is the day room. There really isn't a lot of space there. There, it isn't, you know, there's really no recreation space, no space to really be by yourself and process things. It's a very cramped environment, and doesn't set us up to have the most, the success that we could have if we had a facility that was designed to care for people with these conditions. And then the final photo to the right, you can see that is our, that's our, what we would term our maximum security unit. We are only able to house one person per cell, even though they were built for two, so we lose capacity, because it is filled with individuals who it's not safe to house another person with. And these individuals also, you know, you can see that row of doors there, that's where our mental health professionals are basically going to provide their services in those doorways, either through the closed door, by talking, you know, through the, you know, the crack in the door, or, or with the door open with at least a couple of other correctional officers side by side with a mental health professional, in order to assure safety. So there are better ways to do it, and we've seen that in newer facilities that are designed for this purpose. Some data about what, this is local data for Douglas County. This is through data we've gathered through the stepping up initiative, which I think we're going to touch on in a little bit, if you're unfamiliar with what that is. But here's the average length of stay. So the, the blue lines are people who have a mental illness. The orangish lines, I guess, are individuals who don't. And you can see, if you come to jail and you're seriously mentally ill, and we're going to use the acronym SMI going forward for serious mental illness, your stay is much longer. And in some studies nationally, we're actually better than the national average, where individuals with a serious mental illness on a similar charge tend to stay in jail four times longer than an individual without serious mental illness. Here's the percentage of bookings into our jail of individuals with a serious mental illness. And this goes back, basically, beginning of January twenty-one through July twenty-two. And you can see we're, you know, we hover right around, give or take, that twenty percent mark of serious mental illness. And when you talk about the number, the raw numbers, which is on the next slide, we had about forty-three percent had some diagnosis of mental illness, whether they, whether it was serious or, or not as serious. And about twenty-five percent had a serious mental illness. During the two years prior to the pandemic, we booked just shy of twenty thousand people a year into the Department of Corrections downtown Omaha. And that's pretty, historically, it's been around that number. During the pandemic, everybody's data changed. Sherry's data changed, our data changed. So I wanted to share both, because as we are gradually working back to normal procedures, I'm not sure where we're going to end up, or that the new normal is going to be, but it'll probably be somewhere between where we were in two thousand and twenty and somewhere between where we were in two thousand and nineteen. So of those nearly twenty thousand that were booked, eight thousand five hundred and seventy-four had a mental illness of some type, and nearly five thousand had a serious mental illness. During the pan, or prior to the pandemic, or no, I'm sorry, that's during the pandemic, during twenty and twenty-one, you see the bookings went down in kind of accordingly, but about the same percentage, individuals, seven thousand three hundred and eighty-four with a mental illness, and of those, four thousand two hundred and ninety-three had a serious mental illness. So we are talking about a significant number of people, that a lot of them come into contact with the criminal justice system because of their severe or mental illness, and our thus far inability to keep them stabilized outside of a setting like a jail, or outside of, you know, an acute care psychiatric hospital. And I'm going to turn it back over to Sherry for a minute.
Great, thank you, Mike. So I'm going to take a moment here to talk about the services that Douglas County has developed in collaboration with Douglas County Corrections and the Community Mental Health Center to address exactly the circumstances that Mike was talking about. The number of individuals in corrections with serious mental illness. So in two thousand and six, the first program was developed, Mental Health Divergence Program. And that program works with individuals in corrections that have a mental health diagnosis and have been screened, and we work with the judge that's overseeing their case, try and get them out of corrections quicker. And then we provide intensive case management to them while they're out in the community in hopes to reduce recidivism back in the corrections. To date, we have served six hundred and eighty individuals in that program. In two thousand and ten, the Community Mental Health Center developed the Intensive Case Management Program for incarcerated transitional-age youth, individuals eighteen years and older. That was at a request from the Department of Health and Human Services. That program since has transitioned to what is called Emergency Community Support, and that program is funded through Region Six Behavioral Health Care. To date, that program has served seven hundred and fifty-six individuals, again, focused on intensive case management to reduce recidivism for people who have been in Douglas County Corrections. In two thousand and thirteen, the Community Mental Health Center began providing educational curriculum to individuals in Douglas County Corrections. We now call that Start Now. It's an evidence-based curriculum, and we've served six hundred and ten individuals in that program to date. In two thousand and fifteen, we received the Bureau, the BJA Second Chance Act grant to provide intensive outpatient within Douglas County Corrections. That program is designed specifically to work with individuals that have mental health and substance use. We provide them with group therapy, and then also individual therapy and case management. To date, in that program, we have served six, five hundred and fifty-one individuals. In two thousand and fifteen, Douglas County joined the stepping up initiative, initiatives that are focused specifically on individuals with mental health issues in corrections. How do we keep individuals from going into corrections? How do we get people out of corrections and reduce recidivism? How do we provide them with the services and treatment that they need? So with that, in two thousand and seventeen, one of the things that we saw is that individuals in corrections, they were able to get into treatment services quick enough because there's a long waitlist to get chemical dependency evaluations. So the Community Mental Health Center hired somebody specifically that goes to Douglas County Corrections and completes chemical dependency evaluations. And to date, we have completed seven hundred and four evaluations to help those individuals get out of jail quicker and get into treatment in hopes, again, to reduce recidivism. That is our ongoing theme between Mike and I. In two thousand and eighteen, we received a NACO Achievement Award. And then in two thousand and nineteen, we were designated a stepping up innovator county in regard to the great work that our county is doing in regard to criminal justice and behavioral health. And then in two thousand and twenty-two, we will start another intensive outpatient program. We've received a second grant to be able to do that. And then finally... We're having a bit of a technical difficulty, I apologize. Okay, there we go. Okay, so as we just discussed, there are several programs that we have together, and we built together that overlap with each other. Mike, I'm going to have you talk a little bit about the overlap of that.
All right, so what Sherry and I have learned over the course of our various partnerships is that we are serving not just similar populations, oftentimes, it's the same population. It's the same people, unfortunately, that find their way into the criminal justice system that also are in need of services from the behavioral health system. So that overlap, while unfortunate, is our reality. And we have some data on how many people who come to jail who have also been Sherry's clients. And during the pandemic, like I said, the numbers, everything changed, but we averaged about forty-two admissions a month in the jail of, of people who were fairly recently, within the last few years, clients at the Community Mental Health Center. And during the twelve months prior to the pandemic, we averaged seventy-five admissions a day for people, or not a day, I'm sorry, that'd be a lot. Seventy-five admissions per month of individuals who were, have been clients at the Community Mental Health Center. So you can see, that's almost, you know, two and a half a day. And so we are seeing the same people. And so we are seeing the same people, and unfortunately, you know, building that bridge between us and being able to sustain people's success. We've been, we have a couple of programs that have done a wonderful job of that, and we'll tell you a little bit about those. One of them, the Intensive Outpatient Program, that's been so successful, it was funded a second time to expand, and a program called Familiar Faces, which I'll let Sherry talk about in a minute. But the collaboration needs to grow. We haven't, we've found things that work, but we haven't scaled them up to the need. And so that's part of what we're trying to achieve with this project.
I'm just going to give a quick highlight about our Familiar Faces program. Again, this is another program that we looked at and said, wow, we're seeing a lot of the same individuals cross our paths. And what can we do to try and help reduce that recidivism? And so we did a pilot for a year between our departments, and then we had other individuals at the table. Omaha Police Department, for example, were involved. And what we did is we worked with eight individuals, and that doesn't sound like a lot, but it was eight very chronic individuals, and we looked at reduction of recidivism for those individuals, and we provided, the Community Health Center provided intensive case management to those individuals. We were the familiar face, our case manager. Every time that person was in corrections, we were there. What I can tell you about that program is when it came to the cost of jail days, it was well over $100,000 when we first started. A year later, it was in the 50s, it was around $58,000. So significant impact on those individuals' lives. And that's one of the things we're looking at doing, is how do we increase our collaboration in innovative programs like that so we can impact individuals' lives?
This is, this is one of the few things in life that actually, if you work together and you do more, you get a better outcome, and we think it's probably actually cheaper than the status quo. I mean, we also need to think about, we think about what these new services, what's this going to cost, what's this going to, what are we spending every day to keep people homeless? Or to keep people coming in and out of jail and out of ERs? We spend an awful lot of our resources to not improve a thing, and it's time to take a look at something different. One of the options that we included in Phase 1 of the study, to hopefully include, I'm a fan of it anyway, is a collaborative space where we could bring in a lot of different resources to game plan the most difficult folks in our community, to bring all the resources to the table that we need to wrap around them in a holistic manner, so that we give them the best opportunity for success. These folks have a lot of things that are stacked against them, and they're going to need a lot of resources for us to move them into, you know, maybe they won't ever live 100% independently and autonomously, but get them as close to that as we can. So in this space, we had some informal conversations with some of our other county departments, and we asked the question, I'm not asking you to try to increase your budget or have additional staff members, but would you take what you already have and apply some of those resources to a space like this? And so the Douglas County General Assistance Center, Veteran Services, Health Department, others, all said, yes, we would put resources in a space like this. This is also a space where we could collaborate with other agencies, both public and private. We can't do it all ourselves, and there are many nonprofit agencies and experts in the community that could come in and also serve and work with us in this process. And also some of our other agencies, we have a pretty extensive partnership with local, with probation, and emerging in partnership, I would say, with law enforcement. One of the brief things I'll just say about Familiar Faces that's kind of neat is that law enforcement is involved in that. So if they encounter an individual who's on Familiar Faces program in the community, they know that they have somebody else they can call rather than just come into the jail with that person. And those are, like I said, those are small ideas right now that have shown some real, some big promise, and we need to scale them up to the need, the needs of the community. So in a space like this, we could provide kind of a one-stop shop, if you will, to meet the needs for mental health, addiction treatment, healthcare, housing, case management, get people's nutrition needs met, and maybe even if they progress to a point where we can talk about their vocational needs and helping them be self-sufficient in the future. So there's a lot of advantages that we can have and efficiencies that we can gain in having a space like this. Thank you, Mike and Sherry. So where do we go from here? I think a couple of things that we got to the point of a summary is that the spaces that are currently used for mental health, either inmates or patients, were not designed for that function or those functions, and they're, they're not at the level of the care that the staff are doing, so they're hindrances. The second thing is there's a compelling rationale for co-location. There are some issues with co-location, and we're going to get into that now. So going forward, and that's what the second part of this study is about, is to determine exactly what the county board may do. There has been no decision made on the final direction, but that's, that's part of this process which we're here for tonight. So the advantages and disadvantages of co-location, where we would be building a facility for both community mental health and correctional mental health, sharing spaces and getting some efficiencies. There are, there are some programs that we did, which combined, the first part, all those different spaces. And this compared to two separate facilities probably has a lower cost. There is some staffing efficiencies through, through sharing. For instance, you don't need two kitchens, you don't need two maintenance staff, you don't need two groundskeepers. So there is some efficiencies in having a single combined facility compared to two. And then the example, the quality of services and outcomes may be better because of the collaboration, which is within the confines of one facility. The downside of co-location is the perception that you're combining prisoners in the jail with patients in a mental health facility. And that, that stigma is something that, that needs to be either considered or accepted as, as an issue for co-location. The advantages and disadvantages of several locations is obviously the opposite of those things. It's probably going to cost more, it's going to be more square footage, the efficiency of staff and combining of services is, is lost. And there's going to be potentially some increased operational and staffing costs, but the public perception may ease by the fact that you're having a separate community facility and a separate correctional facility. On both of these, and I'll go back a little bit, on the right side is the, is the campus environments of the, the Community Health Center on 42nd and Woolworth. There's a lot of buildings on that, on that campus, that's the environment. One of the things that Sherry's facility has right now is the advantages of maintenance, food service, et cetera. So if her facility is located in this environment, or co-located, is located in this environment, there are some, some reductions in the total size of the facility by having food service, having a maintenance staff, et cetera, here. Similarly, with, with the 16th and Levelworth side, if a co-located facility is here, it has some advantages with, again, Mike's kitchen, Mike's maintenance staff. And on the, on the correction side is security staff. If he has to put a secure facility and a, and a co-location over at 42nd and Levelworth, for instance, he has some real issues with getting a security staff and maintenance staff. So the study over the next couple of months is, is going to acknowledge and quantify all those issues, and the, the, the preferences are going to be the county board's decision on what the direction is going to be. One of the things that we've talked about is having evidence-based best practice facility, which you do not have now. Your spaces are definitely not in that realm. So mental health care experience includes operational efficiency. When you, when Sherry talked about her long quarters and having to, having staff go to all these different places in her building, that's not operational efficiency. So having a facility where staff can directly observe what's going on and having short distances to go to the different areas that need to be is part of the operational facility. And then clinical excellence is creating a positive healing environment. When Mike and Sherry showed you their spaces, and they talked about acoustics and color and access to natural light and nature and everything, they were lacking that. So that, that is where we're headed with the direction that the county board decides to do in a facility or facilities. And the care experience, when we're talking about the continuum of care, it's not caring for, for an individual for a couple of months and kicking him out the door, and they're wondering what to do. It's trying to step down into, into allowing them to have the training and the guidance to know what to do when they, when they finally leave the facilities. So some of the things, some of the imaging that we, we talked about doing that are opposite of the spaces we have now. This is an exterior view, is this a designed facility? It is not, but it's kind of the imagery that we're hoping to see, where we're talking about having connections to nature, low-rise construction, non-institutional, in bright open spaces. Next slide, Nate. We just have a couple more left. I apologize for this, just a little bit of background. Well, you have, you have your documents, so if you, if you would look to Best Practice Mental Health, that page, where you have the four images on it, what we're trying, what we're trying to say is that today's facilities are still going to have their boundaries. We're not going to let mental health patients, you know, open a door and walk out and, and walk down the street. But more than ever before, there, there are less places that can bind them and more, more places of treatment and preparation for the return in the outside world. So as you look at these images and you remember what Mike and Sherry were showing you what their spaces were like, we're showing access to natural light, even in the consultation room on the, on the lower left, having access to natural light, having a calming environment. If you remember Mike's mental health cell sleeping room up on the upper right, having, having a room that is a normalized environment, views to the outside, it might be a courtyard that's secure, but it's still, it's, it's still a view, view outside to nature. And Sherry was talking about legal issue of having, having suicide prevention within the facility, but still having a facility that, you know, could look like a, call it dorm. And I understand that having all these nice features, somebody are thinking, well, what happens when somebody acts out and starts trying to trash the environment? And basically, that's the challenge, is to create an environment that has suicide prevention number one, but number two, is vandal resistant. And that can be done and still having, having the images. And then having calming spaces, basically, I'm going to say time on spaces, but spaces where someone is acting out, they can go into, one of, one of the strategies now is they have a blue room or a calming room. So in summary, the last page of our, of our presentation, neither facility was designed to provide mental health services. They negatively affect the passionate staff and directors that really care about making a difference, but they, they're really hampered by their, their existing spaces and all, all the things that negatively impacted their ability to do care. And then collaboration between the two entities may, may lead to some really efficiencies and real, real impacts. And I think that when Sherry and Mike were talking about trying to expand programs that they've collaborated on over the last decade, that can be real. So the, the, the challenge of, of the remainder of our, our study and the reason we're trying to get some input from, from Douglas County systems is that the direction needs to be the smartest way to go. It may not be the perfect way to go, but it needs to be having the, I think, the best method of all the factors involved. It's the essential question that we have left for the next, next couple of months to do. So whatever the final solution, though, the current best-practiced methodology is going to change the environment of caring spaces for mental health. That's really paramount in our, in our efforts. With that, I think Commissioner, there we are, talk about where to go.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank our staff and Al again for the presentation and the work that they did on this study for us as commissioners to present to our board, but also to the public. And so at this time, what we'll do is, I have a little timer here that will go with about five minutes for people to provide comments on the study. And then if you do have any questions, we'll jot those down and come back to them. We just want to make sure we get everybody's input before we get stuck on one subject if there's a question. And so with that, we'll just go ahead and see, there is a microphone out there, and when you're about one minute from ending, I'll just say one minute. So you're used to that, aren't you, Ben?
Can you hold the microphone? The depiction of those rooms was, it seemed rather punitive to me, the way that they were designed, the bareness, you know, the, the star, the features of those rooms, they sounded, looked to me like more punitive, that anybody in those rooms would be uncomfortable and not comforting in any way. That was my concern, but I see that there's going to be some, some improvements, we hope. But here's what I see, though. Maybe this is a good idea, I'm no expert in this, in this field, but I am a citizen of this community, I've been here many years. Last year, I think Kim Havakati was hired to do a study in the possibility of the establishment of family resource centers, which has kind of a similar approach to what this is. Family resource centers would be one location, preferably north, south to begin with, where families in crisis, families, youth who are in crisis, who have an urgent need, could come, or they could have direct services of, of a very kind to immediately help the family in crisis, might be 24/7, which I think would be ideal. This looks to me like this is going to be tax-funded, right, this effort here? The family resource center, which I think is equally as important, I don't think is tax-funded. According to Kim, I think that the approach is different in terms of funding. I think both centers are equally needed in our community, so why is the funding approach so different? That's what I gleaned from this.
Hi, thank you, Scott Jackson. I work for Harlem County Service and the Homeless Department. Thank you, guys touched greatly upon the collaboration, and I'm out in the community every day, working with a lot of our homeless population that have mental health concerns that are involved with the criminal justice system. So for me, I'm really liking the collaboration aspect, there's not enough of that that I'm seeing every day. So for me, I think we really just need to figure out how we can collaborate, and we've got such great organizations in the community, and I think we've got a really... And we've got such great organizations in the community, and I think we've got a really good idea of how we can approach this, how we can tackle it. But to me, I'm always running into that collaboration aspect where I want to see us all communicate more efficiently, more effectively. I mean, for me, I really struggle with, we've got homelessness, we've got criminal justice issues, we've got all these multi-pronged issues. And again, what I'm really encountering day to day is, you know, we've got, I've got a client that's involved with the criminal justice system, oftentimes they're going to jail, and then I have no, really no communication about whether they're going to get released or how they're going to get released. And then there's no probation with parole involvement. And oftentimes, my clients, they've got mental health issues, there's no community mental health diversion opportunities that I've encountered in my seven years in the field. So, I'd like to see better collaboration and utilize, you know, the people. I'd love to be in contact for you guys. I'd love to work with you guys because ultimately, I want to see our community grow. I want it to be a safe place for everybody to be in. I want greater collaboration and all of that. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you very much. Anybody else would like to make a comment?
Well, my name is Derek, and I'm the co-founder of the Returning Veterans Resource Network. When I was looking at the stats that are about 20 community service beds for the general community, it seems like the corrections need are outweighing the community needs. It seems like they should be balanced more. I mean, you gotta, if you don't have 90 beds for the, or 76 beds for the jail, then you need 76 beds for the community. Not that they were once one building that issue all the services. Like you say, having all of those people there to collaborate with each other to serve the inmates and the patients at the same time is very important.
Thank you, very good one, just a second. There's one, sorry, two, three, oh, two.
Thank you. My name is Anita, and I lived in this community for many years. I'm a retired registry nurse. I worked many years, 19 years at St. Joe's Center for Mental Health, if some of you remember that facility, as well as with other nurses that worked at Richard Young, as well as in a dual medical setting, a community alliance along the one world. And so, I am so happy that this is being spoken of. Mental health has, I don't know how you're going to get past the stigma, but you've got to. It's got to change, and it has to start with the front of that building. It looks so gothic, that dark brick. When I worked at St. Joe's Center for Mental Health, people walked into our corridors, couldn't believe the way this building looked. It did not look like a mental health facility. Why? Because that current administrator had foresaw to see that you needed color, you needed to have vibrancy and life. The staff were, the nurses were amazing. Every single one of them was looking towards being accredited in that particular specialty area because nurses that were inside were not considered to be real nurses. That was really sad and hurtful to hear. When I went up, when they dissolved and I moved up, and I really hesitated in doing this because I just had tears, thinking that we would not have anything here in the southeastern part of Omaha. I moved up to St., to Emmanuel Hospital, where they created the psychiatric emergency center. I worked alongside those ER nurses and those sheriffs, officers, anybody that brought in those individuals and sat with them, both of them, to talk about what brought them there. We were the best assessment nurses ever. You've got to do better. We can't let these departments, these nurses not lead without having something that comes and follows afterwards. Is this going to be just another Band-Aid approach? Is this going to be something more where it's going to continue on and it's going to continue to be talked about? Just as I believe Community Alliance has their coming out of darkness fundraising each year, and that it has to be. Their mental health is part of health, no matter what. So, that's just what I'm sharing. I like seeing this, again, light, color, sound. We have so much that we can put in the way of, for many of them to walk in, sounds that are calming, gardens, the exterior, this one that's in this picture and that, wonderful. But yes, I hope this works out. Thank you.
I think we still have openings if you want to come out of retirement.
Hi. Hi. I think one is a question, and maybe I missed it. And yes, congratulations on what looks to be two really great options and very appealing. But of those with mental illness in the jail or just with mental illness, are there some average length of stays that you have? And then following up from what Anita said, and I'm sure this is not part of the project, but so often what occurs is an emergency room in our community, and then there's nothing after. So, after kind of a length of stay, do you have plans for some kind of step down or transitional piece of the facilities?
Any other comments?
Thank you. Hello, everyone, my name is Alicia Shelton. So, I have a question regarding, I'm a mental health therapist, I've been in the field for some years. I actually interned at the jail back when Mike was, I was Alicia Ford then, but I don't know. You might have been over mental health services then, back with you and Justine Wall. So, I've been in this community for some time, worked at Hartland, went to Winnebago, worked up there, so I've got a large amount of insight. My brain thinks differently, so I'm actually thinking about the disadvantage and the stigma. And I'm curious as to if there's any data, and this is a very great study, I love looking at and researching, and you guys are focusing on this. Is there any data that might show the differences between individuals who are incarcerated versus individuals currently in the community mental health setting that have had any instances with outbursts or, you know, panic buttons, or have had to have anybody called? Because actually, when I was in Douglas County Corrections, I had zero instances with anyone. It felt honestly more unsafe in the community mental health setting, especially if somebody had, you know, been gone for some time and I didn't know that they were maybe incarcerated and for months they were without their medication, and they've come back and to see me and, you know, they've been on Medicaid for maybe six months. So, if there is any data on that, maybe that could help the stigma.
Thank you, good point.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mo, I'm a clinical, special worker, I'm the clinical director of the kids. I love this project, I think it's bringing some great ideas, and it really brings me home to see that we're looking towards making these services a lot more trauma-friendly for the clients. What we want to bring to light is just the gap of services for the kids and family in our community. Actively, kids do our services, we see a lot of, a lot of things that we could be doing where we can fund some preventative stuff for the kids, right? So, yes, of course, we have a lot of people here in the community that need these around services, right? They're already there. We can also do so much to prevent it with the kids, with all the trauma they're going through, their families, and investing in that, providing more services for the youth in our community.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just have a question. One of the big issues is this co-location. I was hoping before we could go, we could have the names of a couple of institutions that have accomplished this, have co-located the criminal and community work. So, we can do, simply look in the internet, this people, this housework with the fellow people.
Hi, my name is Bob with Venice. I'm a little different because I don't work in a mental health facility, or I never have, but I have family that has been involved in it. And I shout out KTV, for I was watching tonight, and they said this meeting was happening. I just thought, you know, this would be a good opportunity for me to come down and see how this is moving forward. And having been to Douglas County, it's like walking back in the 50s. It's really diggy, it's depressing, even if there's visiting there. I mean, I'm sure it's been a little bit better since the last amendment there, but I can see where that would be a very unfortunate place to be. Unfortunately, I have family members that visit there on a monthly basis. And it's a depressing deal. And anything to move this forward in a facility that is much brighter, much more progressive to see improvement in people, because in my case, it's hard to see improvement every month in my situation. And one thing I heard mentioned too is the familiar faces thing up there, which seems like a very good program. And I know in my particular situation, I've had them both go into incarceration or going into lasting hope, or in my case, Emmanuel. And I think it's a very good thing to look at when somebody's initially processed, well, who are they? Have we talked to them? Do they need to be locked up in jail? Can we, you know, take them instantly to whatever, which I think is a marvelous idea rather than doing that. In one particular situation with a family member, I called law enforcement, and I won't go specifically, but very calmly sat down on the curb and waited for them. And the first thing they did was put me in handcuffs, I was fully, that evaluated the situation. And I was calm, but very disappointed. And at the end, I was taken out of handcuffs, the other partner was taken in. But, you know, that's the sort of thing about mental illness that really affects us all. The way it's applied seems very un-uniform or, I don't know, not everybody's on the same page of what the best, you know, solution to all this is. Anything to drive this forward in a better facility that takes care of everything. And I assume this includes the youth juvenile facility? No, it doesn't. So, the kids are involved in that. That would be, yeah. In my opinion too, if there's any way to somehow integrate that in, I think that would be a great opportunity too. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? I know, I know you very.
I just would like to say I'm opposed to co-location. There's not much difference from going in one door or the other door in terms of the stigma of going in.
And I'd sort of like to add to that. And you're my friend, or a daily person, but once a week, I'm also the leader, one of the leaders of the Law of Depression by Cores support groups. We run support groups. We see many of your alumni each and every week. I was at the meeting last Thursday, and I took this idea and we discussed it at our support group. To say stigma is a problem is grossly understanding. This would happen to me. The taxpayer in me, the engineer in me loves this facility idea. But the mental health person in me says, boy, you're going to have to finesse this. Boy, this is going to be difficult because the people I, we taught last week, and they're just not receptive to it. And if it caused them not to use the facility, it has to be very, very finessed if you're going to do it.
Anyone else? Any other comments from anyone? So, I do just want to make a comment about, because there's been some comments about youth and adults. This particular project is just adults. But I would love to have a conversation with you about those additional youth programs as we are continuing our work through our justice project, what we can do better in that arena. So, but this is really just the adult side of things.
How much does this all cost?
We don't know yet. That's what we are gathering input from the study. We have some good information, the staff sat down and put, you know, their pencils to paper with the architect. They brought us forth, the study, and now we're trying to get input. And then at the same time, we're going back and looking at some of those figures as to what is it currently costing us to provide these the way we're providing them? And how might it be provided if one of these options is chosen to move forward? We have earmarked, I will tell you, some of our ARPA dollars from our second allocation that we received for this project.
Hi, my name is Josh Catholic, I live at Catholic High School. My mom works for the VA Health Clinic, and she works primarily with mental health people, and she works during like night shifts or when there's locked units, and then there's like more public units, like Unlocked or Freedom. I was just curious, is there going to be something similar to that, or is it all going to be intermingle? Because people with like SMI, really serious mental illness, let's discuss, can't be, I feel like, the same thing because they've got to be very suicidal or have manic episodes compared to the people that are more, can be more kind of independent compared to those that have SMI.
Very, very good point, and thank you. And that's, we deal with that right now in our current facilities, and so we'll be sure to take that into account in the next few months. Good point.
Sarpy County is in the process of opening a mental health unit in their correction facility. Is that going to have any impact on this project?
Just a couple of things.
What was your first name again?
Anita. I'd like to know if there's been any time spent in looking back as to what failed in our past mental health system that we had? Because we had really two very well-known and well-established facilities. And as a young man was saying, in those facilities, you have different programming. You had your community programming, maybe on the first primary floor, where adults, where their mental illness was manageable, and medications were well-established, lots of groups. Then you have another floor that may have, and at that time, we had kids too, as well as kids and adolescents in this facility. But then there was always an intensive care floor. So, looking at the changes in how we manage aggression and how we de-escalate, you know, those kind of, my concern again is that safety level. When we did, when the architecture came in and did the changes in the facility, we went from wearing panic buttons on our belts and such to panic button underneath the desk. We didn't need it as much because we had, definitely had more staff, we were doing much more interaction, much more one-to-one, much more grouping. But this takes a lot of staff, and I'm concerned about the money we have. You know, insurance, I'm pretty sure insurance was a reason why a lot of those length of stays went up to almost three months, especially when you have no place just to send them home, mom or family members that are dynamics there have changed. Long-term care facilities, no longer, people don't like those. I mean, there's just so much involved. So, sustainability, that is a big concern for me, especially when it comes to money.
Did you have your head up to your neck there? Oh, you're next, one more.
This is Mr. Meyer, there. Do you have, how many cases in the corrections department on a monthly basis? Forty-two, is that correct? There are much more than just that number of 75 on a monthly basis. Those are just the ones that had previously recently been a community mental health center client. There are many more.
There are many more people with mental illness that are booked every month besides that.
Are these people through, through a diagnosis with substance abuse and...
It's pretty frequent, yeah. Which is why we establish one program, and we're establishing a second program to address that.
How many people do you treat for schizophrenia? How many people do you treat for bipolar? Do you know?
I don't know that I could recite those figures with precision off the top of my head. What I can say, you know, is we typically run about that 20 to 25% of our folks have a serious mental illness, which would be among, you know, the two that you just listed.
Yeah, hi, I'm Dave Campbell. And I know you talked about, about, I've heard this a couple of different times, that these two facilities were never meant to be what they are. And what I've heard mainly was, you're talking about environmental changes, but then I know there's some other things too. I'd just like to know, I think what Benny was saying, there's huge kind of anywhere I was thinking too, you know, there's, they're just running out of resources beyond this. If we improve this resource that we're talking about, acknowledge, I again completely agree with that. It has to be updated, it has to, we have to figure something out where these people are going to go and get treated. But I'm more concerned with what happens after this. And the collaborations that have to happen, I know you guys have collaborated, you get this one, but what are you doing in the community also that's a continuum of care after this? We talked about it a whole lot, and I know we were talking about it the last meeting as well. I know it's not about long-term care, but to me, it is about long-term care. Because these people are coming back to you over and over again. They come back to us sometimes too, right? And we don't have all the answers as well, but I'd just like to hear what you guys think about that, about what they continue with care after we get this accomplished, as I believe you said.
And I think that that's a good point in terms of, this right now is what we can, I wouldn't say control, but what we can really look at in terms of Douglas County. And those partnerships, as you said, too, are really important. And we talked about that today after our board of trustees meeting, that we probably need to look at that and do a little bit more of that collaboration for that aftercare. And so that's all part of this discussion as well. Because once they leave wherever they're leaving from, we have to make sure that they're going to be successful. And so I agree, those collaborations and those cooperations that we have with the community, because we certainly cannot do this all by ourselves. We can take a look at what we are responsible for and what we currently are providing, and how can we do that better? And that includes looking when they leave to try and, to make sure that they don't come back. Absolutely. Well, with that, again, I just want to thank you all for coming out tonight. Again, this is one, you've learned about Douglas County and its services and what the study is. You've learned about what we're doing here with these town halls. We have a lot more discussion to occur that I can, and I don't mean to speak for the other commissioners. Commissioner Friend has joined us there in the back as well. But I do believe, I can say that, one, we all take mental health as a very high priority in our work, and two, that we believe mental health is health. And that's the way it should be treated. And that's the beginning of getting rid of that stigma. And it begins with us. It begins with that discussion. Because if we keep, keep it in there, it's going to stay there. But it's up to us to change that. And that's what we're hoping to do with doing things better than how we're doing them today. But thank you all for being here tonight.